Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, September 21, 2022. All council meetings will continue to be livestreamed on our city website. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mrs. Kelsmith, Mrs. Strausberger, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Lavelle Chair, six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I'd like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council, and profanity will not be permitted. Once you are called, please restate your name and your neighborhood for the record. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Good morning. City creates not shady deals in Bon Air. This was right at my husband's funeral. Retired deputy fire chief Mike Mullen touched the life of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be annually raised by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting and his many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If he had questions, he would stop and continue to answer. He worked tirelessly and energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, my folks. Well done. Rest in peace, my friends. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Base is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Councilman Kraus worked out a deal to take McKinley Park from our counterpart district. Now it's time for Bon Air to get the long, closed school into the city's control. The school needs to be torn down and a green base put in its place. A memorial green base is most fitting. A plaque is installed at the school due to the line of duty death of firefighter Mark Kalenda. He lived his entire life in the neighborhood and he attended school at Bon Air Elementary. Join our supporters, Mayor Gani, Councilman Coghill, and State Representative Denham for the creation of a green base. The Green Base is the solution for our community. City creates not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Andrea Williams. Is Andrea Williams with us? If not, our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bill Suver. I'm the Global Intelligence Society founder that in 2010, candidate for president in 2024. This is going to be a little bit different than my usual presentations because I'm going to actually wing it a little bit. There's a lot in the news about England and about KC3 and QE2. We are dominated still culturally and genetically by English and German people. We are very English in many, many ways. When I went to England, the University of Oxford, I had a double appointment, St. Cross College for Jewish studies and St. Anthony's College for Japanese studies. And I also had a third appointment, the University of London, the Department of International History at the LSE. I was concerned about doing research on the emergence of modern Japan and modern Israel. And of course, the United Kingdom at the time was critical to both of those emerging. But when I was at Oxford, I began to realize that the people at Oxford were very different than the people who were in Oxford City. It's something like what I experienced when I was teaching at the University of Pittsburgh, that there's all this stuff going on inside of the University of Pittsburgh, but there's a lot of other stuff that's going on with the people who live around it, you know, in Oakland. Now, I want to call attention to John Nettles and Helen Mirren here, because they're vastly more important, in my view, in terms of the middle-class culture, because the culture of British society, English society in particular, is dominated by the middle class. The English killed their king in 1649. Charles I was killed, but they didn't work God very well. So Charles II, under the Restoration, brought back in 1660, and he was succeeded by William and Mary. And in 1688, William was obliged by the House of Commons, which was rising, wanting to reduce the authority of the monarch. So he was compelled to sign what the British call the Declaration of Rights. Think that they don't have a constitution. Many people think that, but our Bill of Rights is consistent with, and in my view emerged as a consequence of, the Declaration of Rights. And they created something, a position called the President of Council. Now, this President of Council, I'm talking about in the late 17th century, was supposed to adjudicate between the Council, I mean, the House of Commons, and the monarch. So that is one of the reasons why when our founding fathers were creating our government, they used that role. That role has emerged as much more important. But I really advise you, if you don't already know about Miss Summer Murders and John Nettles, he's much more popular than Charles and Helen Mirren in Prime Suspect.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone with us in chambers wishing to speak? Please come forward.
My name is Javon F. Brown. I live in the Hill District, Katy, over at the tires. Now, coming here to council, they're saying that they're going to be changing the rules and certain things we can't say, and then we're not going to be permitted to say. But I want you to understand why I come down here. When I went to school in Penn Hills, they taught us history. Your civil duty was to tell the elected officials what we need. I went to Carlo College. I studied African-American history. When I studied African-American history, there was a book that came before the Mayflower. And in this book, a five-year-old, that's when I was five, and I think how he said about my granddaughter. My granddaughter keep asking to come down here, but I don't want her self-esteem to be torn down by this man that's supposed to build them up. In this book, they had a little five-year-old girl sitting on the steps. These are slaves. She's holding her head. Another slave comes past the older one and say, "Child, what's wrong with you?" She said, "Misses, like beat me to death." She had lost a cap for the baby. That baby died too. That little five-year-old girl died two days later. Nothing happens to the master or missus. They also said in the city, "At one time, we black people would have to jump off the sidewalks if you walked past white people." This was written. This was the law. We would have to jump in the mud, the water. In this book, before the Mayflower, they show a black man walking. I mean, they talk about the black man walking. And here comes this man that owns the bank, big executive. And he say, "Don't you see me and my daughter walking down here? Get off the sidewalk." He was a smart mouth one like me. He said, "You ain't no better than me." I'm not getting off the sidewalk. And he didn't. That banker went home and got a gun and came back and killed that black man. Nothing happened to him. So you have to understand colorism, you say we can't talk about it, but if you're lichenplactid, you get treated better than what a dark infected. And the truth is, my son, my black son, dark infected son, begging for his life. Five cops walked out. He's saying he had one lung, bleeding from the head. It's in the paper. It's in the autopsy. All this is written. I come down here because I can't do nothing about my son. My son is gone. But I'm trying to stop it from anybody else dying. Because it's not just, okay, I want to say this too. It's not just white cops I'm talking about. When I went to Jamaica, they killed the man. These were black cops killed a black man. He had a skiff. A skiff is a joint, one joint. And they're allowed in Jamaica to have four plants, and they're allowed to have so much weed. Now, the ambassador was saying that he felt that if you're going to kill a man for a joint, and these are black people killing each other, we don't love each other, and we should. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Any further speakers wishing to speak? Please come forward. Any further speakers? Seeing none, that will move us on to our Standing Committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. Madam Clerk, if you could read Bill 711 and 712 together. Both were held for executive sessions.
Bill 711, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 862 of 2001, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Cohen Law Group to address a matter of pending telecommunications litigation by increasing the total spend by $85,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $146,050. Bill Number 712, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Mary Decourt Rhodes in Freshman in Rizza, PC, in the Amount of $125,000 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation Filed at Allegheny County Court of Common, Please.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendations? Need a motion to approve the invoices?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the interdepartmental transfers?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Transfers are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards?
Some move.
Then second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee, chaired by Councilman Kraus. We have one further paper, Bill 629.
Bill 629, Resolution Establishing the Healthy and Safe Pittsburgh 2030 Initiative in Advisory Committee.
A motion to approve, a brief discussion.
Second, can we just leave this on the table? I did not print out the new resolution.
Mr. Burgess, that was going to be my request.
Yes, if I can print out the new resolution, because you told on the table, I came in, my mind was on something else. Just give me a few minutes, I'll print it up.
Yeah. That was going to be my request. Mr. Chair, can we just leave the bill open and proceed to Bill 726, please?
Yes, we will. Bill 726, Madam Clerk.
Bill 726, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 91 of 2021, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into an amended five-year professional services agreement or agreements with Roll Call Technologies, LLC, for a web-based secondary employment scheduling system in an amount not to exceed $853,925. The parties seek to further amend the current agreement in order to add scheduling services for the city's Bureau of Emergency Medical Services at no added cost to the city. No other substantive changes to the terms of agreement are required.
Motion to approve, a discussion, please.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman Kraus?
Great, thanks, Mr. Chair. Is our Public Safety Director with us?
Our chief is here of the EMS. Chief Romano's here.
Hi, Chief Romano. Good morning.
You want him to come to the table, Councilman?
Yes, please.
Chief? For the public, if you would just introduce yourself in position.
Good morning. Ron Romano, EMS Chief, City of Pittsburgh.
Morning, Chief.
Morning, sir.
Good. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to be able to speak to the purpose of the bill.
For the purpose of, okay, I got you on the sign there. We're going to utilize what police have been using, Roll Call, to cover our extra work activities similar to the police. What we use presently is an in-house program that was built by an employee that passed away about two years ago. So we're concerned about the deterioration of this program, which worked very well in its days, but we have no one to maintain it any longer. We've been told that police have great success with this program, and it's basically self-paid for because there's a surcharge maybe to the venues that hire us.
So, Chief, this is similar to the cover-your-assets contract?
I believe so, that the police had used. We never did.
Yeah, no, I understand, but in principle, it is like the cover-your-assets in that it's a scheduling tool for EMS.
That's correct. It'll be a scheduling tool for our extra work and possibly for different other entries that we use that we need to.
And Chief, I believe you can answer this. This is a budget that expands in the 2021 budget, correct?
It would be, I understand it will be paid for by, there's a percentage charge to the venue that will pay for their service.
I'm sorry, could you do that? Can you go into deeper detail on that?
The venue will be, will charge, Roll Call will charge the venue that hires us a percentage to take, for the fee to cover their expenses.
I see. So that covers the entire $853,000?
I don't believe that's all.
Councilman Kraus?
Yes.
I'm also ask the Office of Management and Budget to come to the table. I think they can better clarify your question.
Sure. Perfect. Thanks.
Good morning. Patrick Cornell, Deputy Director, Office of Management and Budget.
Patrick, good morning.
Doing well. How are you? Good morning.
Good. Can you help me to understand the expenditure, please?
Sure. So, one, going back to your prior question, Roll Call actually acquired Cover Your Assets, so it is one in the same. And then with the secondary.
All right, let's just stop there. I'm sorry. Because that's interesting. So this, it is all one in the same. This one contract, this is sort of an extension of an existing contract within them?
Correct. So the Bureau of Police uses this company as scheduling for their secondary details. The funding for this comes from the Secondary Employment Trust Fund in police. There is a fee associated with each detail as it comes up. So adding on the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services would then allow a similar fee to be added on for the EMS details to help cover the additional costs. Actually, in this case, no additional cost, but to continue the services.
Got you. Perfect. That was the answer I was looking for. Thank you. It was very helpful. Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thanks, Chief.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any further discussion, Council President?
Yeah, I just want to thank the chief for his work. You've done an amazing job with EMS and just seeing all the awards that you get in the accolades. I just want to thank you for staying in here with Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciated by everyone out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation? Thank you for all your work. That takes us to Public Works Committee, chaired by Councilman Coghill. One supplemental paper, Bill 743.
Bill 743, Resolution Authorizing an Interdepartmental Transfer in the Amount of $2 Million from the Bureau of Facilities within the Department of Public Works to the Office of Management and Budget. This transfer is necessary to cover increased fuel costs and unanticipated fleet maintenance expenses.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second, please.
So, okay, well, I met with Patrick this morning. He's here with us. I'll just give you a quick rundown if this seems like a high sticker price for you. We're all aware prices of gasoline have gone up. In 2021, we used $3.2 million worth of gasoline. In 2022, we're projected to use $5 million simply to cost the rising oil and gas. In that, $2 million that we're looking to transfer today is $600,000 is to be put towards vehicle maintenance, which is very necessary. And Patrick is here to answer any questions that anybody might have. So, thanks.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Councilman Kraus, followed by Madam President?
Yep, thanks very much. Hey, Patrick, good morning again.
Good morning again. Thank you.
So, this is a staggering wake-up call to an unexpected expenditure due to a rise in fuel costs. I was really shocked when I saw this, that we are expected to add almost $2 million more in fuel costs this year because of rising fuel prices. Can you tell me, please, approximately, and if you can't, that's fine, we can take it offline, but the $2 million, approximately, how is it split between vehicle maintenance and our added cost in fuel?
Sure. We are proposing to move $1.4 million into the fuel line and $600,000 into the line that would cover the FVS contract for the vehicle maintenance. And Brandon Walton is available for more specific questions as the pleasure of the body.
Okay. The VFS contract, is that for you, Patrick?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The question about the VFS contract, is that for you?
I mean, either of us could handle it. The FVS contract right now moves until the end of next year. We will be doing a full RFP for fleet maintenance services. This particular component is for the non-target, as it's called, maintenance, which is your, anything that is not your typical routine maintenance. And we've seen those costs hover around $300,000 per month. That funding will be needed by the end of the year, not exactly at this moment. There would be a piece that comes to council again to amend that contract to add in $600,000.
Okay. So we're going to put about $1,002,000 into the oil companies' pockets. That's just, it's borderline criminal to see the kinds of record profits that the gasoline companies are making. And we, you know, we struggled to provide basic services to constituencies, and here we are to provide those services, force to put $1,002,000 into the pockets of oil companies. I'm really, really troubled by that. There's nothing we can do. I mean, we do what we have to do, but I have to say I'm really troubled by that expenditure that's not required. But I appreciate your work, appreciate your effort. Thanks for being here, and thanks for explaining that to me.
Madam President?
I'm good.
Councilman Strausberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not a question, a comment. Along the lines of what Councilman Kraus recently finished with, I have noted that, one, $2 million could go a long way toward signal upgrades, traffic calming, things to make walking and biking and other modes of transportation safer in our city. It's a shame that we have to spend this money on this, but I understand the necessity. This is not a comment on the decision. I will be voting in favor of this. But just another statement that PRT, Pittsburgh Regional Transit, recently made a commitment to upgrade all of their buses to, their entire fleet to electric by 2045. I would like to see the city do the exact, make this exact same commitment to figure out the date by which we can convert our entire fleet, our entire fleet. I know that recycling and refuse trucks are a little bit more difficult to convert, but we have the technology. It's possible. I'm certain we can do it with our other vehicles as well. And let's set the target. Let's make it happen. Let's go for it. Because we know that gasoline and other types of fuel are only going to become more volatile in prices into the future. So I will be calling for a post-agenda at some point this fall or into the winter to get an update on what we're doing in our sustainability and climate action plans. But for now, I'd like to ask for partnership and that kind of commitment from the city. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Cornell. So this money that's coming from the Bureau of Facilities, what was that originally there for?
So those amounts are budgeted for utility costs. In particular, we will be pulling from steam and water. I've had conversations with Director Hornstein and his financial staff. They're aware. They're supportive. We don't expect that this would hinder our ability to pay our utility bills for the rest of the year.
Okay. So is this something we typically have money left over for then?
For utilities?
Yeah, like if we're projecting that we can easily pay the bill?
Sure. Some of that depends on, you know, usage rates. With water in particular, we are increasing based on the cooperative agreement with PWSA. So we're phasing in our water expenses. So right now, there's a little bit of wiggle room.
Okay. So is it typically the situation where the remaining funds we set aside just go back into the general fund?
Correct. They would go to the general fund, and what isn't used for fuel this year would also go back into the general fund.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill?
No, I just wanted to, I think it's important to note that this money's unallocated. There's nothing, we're not taking from the vehicles from Public Works or the purchase of new vehicles or possibly leasing vehicles. And I did want to comment on Councilwoman Strausberger. I do welcome that post-agenda. I think we were talking briefly this morning as to, you know, how much does an electric vehicle cost to run, whether maintenance, factoring in also the cost of that vehicle. Obviously, we all would love to see us go electric. I just wonder about the savings, what they would look like. And you could comment on if you know anything about that, Patrick. I don't know.
If I could, Brandon, if you want to comment, I know some vehicles are, it's going to be easier. It'll be able to happen more quickly. But, you know, like the council person said, some of the larger vehicles, it's going to be tough. So if Brandon can comment on it, if you're okay with that.
Oh, Brandon's here. Sure, absolutely. Hi, Brandon.
Good morning, Council. Brandon Walton, Police Services Manager, O B. We are actively working to electrify where we can as quickly as we can, but some of the difficulties do lie on technology and charging infrastructure. Charging infrastructure is very expensive. And battery technology isn't quite there yet in terms of fast charging. They have fast chargers that have high capability with batteries that aren't able to handle that high charge. So that's where we're at, but we are actively pursuing electric vehicles as we see fit.
Good. And Brandon, you know, we could, you know, fish out a lot at the post-agenda once we have that. But just to simplify things, what does it cost to run an electric vehicle today in our fleet versus diesel or gas? Is it cost-effective today as we know it? Or is it neutral? Where's that line at?
That also depends on the operation, the type of vehicle. To run an electric sedan, for example, that, you know, does an eight-hour shift and doesn't need to charge until the evening, it's actually a lot cheaper than a regular sedan. The prices are coming down to close to the same cost. There's very little maintenance required, and we pay a really low rate for electricity. So it's pretty beneficial there. Larger trucks, we're finding that they're two to three times more expensive than regular trucks, and the infrastructure required for them is much more expensive as well. So a little harder there, a little more expensive to operate.
I'm sorry, did you say two to three times more expensive for an electric vehicle?
Truck.
Truck.
We're saying that the average heavy-duty vehicle electrified can be anywhere from two to three times the price of, say, a diesel counterpart. Prices are starting to come down, but for example, you know, a heavy-duty truck, it's $200,000. A diesel may be it's two hundred thousand dollars, and the diesel may be around four hundred to four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars as electric.
So, two different things, operating and upfront cost. I'm really talking about the operating cost as to the maintenance of that. And if electric vehicle goes down, and also factoring in the upfront cost. So, the upfront cost is two to three times more. But to actually keep these vehicles on the road in maintenance, are they cost-efficient? Are they, an electric vehicle costs us more to, say, repair once they break down versus a gas?
I believe we'll see a lot of savings in that as we electrify. That's due to, there's less moving parts, less fluids. So, we're not seeing very high maintenance costs on, if, you know, not very, very much maintenance costs at all on the electric vehicles that we have. We don't have any experience with the heavy-duty electric vehicles yet. I'd say around this time next year, we'll have kind of an idea of some of the pains of having the heavy-duty electric vehicles. But as of right now, with the light-duty sedans, we are seeing quite a bit of savings in terms of operating costs.
Okay, Brandon, yeah, we'll dive into that deeper with Councilwoman Strasburg's post-agenda. I look forward to that conversation. I'm very interested to see where things are today or projected in the future. So, that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Gross?
Did you say my name?
Yes.
I apologize, yeah, I was, I think I was first round, trying to get it in. So, so part of my questions, I think, are pretty perfectly filled in with the other members' questions. So, we're at, you know, we're transferring one point three million of this two million for fuel costs. But I did hear that a breakdown of the gasoline vehicles, right, which is mostly kind of like the cars and the small trucks, right, versus the diesel costs. And certainly, I don't think any of this is there for the, there's no increase in the fueling or charging of electric vehicles, I suppose, right? But if you've got it in your head, the general ballpark of, you know, is that gap, that jump from three point two million, I think it was 2021, and projected to be a five million dollar fuel cost, does that jump equally distributed, fluid distributed between the gasoline part of the fleet and the diesel part of the fleet?
In looking at the numbers, I'd say yes. Basically, the price of fuel has gone dramatically in 2022 compared to what we're, the prices were.
So, both diesel and gas?
Yes.
And do you have members in front of you of, like, how much of our, you know, projected five million dollar budget is gasoline versus diesel or diesel versus gasoline currently? And this is like, you know, so I've got like now a two-road chart in my head. I've got like, so we've got gasoline-powered vehicles, diesel-powered vehicles, and electrical-powered vehicles. And Councilman Calkil, you know, looking for numbers on the kind of acquisition costs in three roads versus like operational costs with repairs and maintenance. But then with like fuel costs would be a third. But I think it'd be really helpful for members, you know, not right in the second, right, but to be thinking about how, what are these levels of costs? Like, it's probably in your minds, when you're looking at how we are changing our fleets and how, you know, what are the different kind of relative fuel costs? I don't think we've seen it broken out that way. And so, I think for the future discussions would be really helpful. If you have any kind of impression about that now, it'd be interesting. Basically, in my mind, if you're still running basically just our haulers, right, on diesel? I don't know how much of everything is diesel.
Most of our heavy-duty fleet is diesel, so fire apparatus, EMS, ambulances, rescue trucks, as well as the refuse and recycling haulers. It's really hard to give a good difference between what we're using, you know, your question with diesel versus unleaded. I can say that monthly average, we use twice as much unleaded as we do diesel, but we also have many more unleaded vehicles than diesel. And then diesel prices are usually around a dollar or more per gallon than unleaded. But any more information than that, I'd have to do that for you. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, we're going to do that for the future discussion. I appreciate it. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus, second round?
Yep, thanks, Mr. Chair, appreciated. I'm Brandon Walton. Just a probably more comment than a question. I think as we proceed to lay this foundation for electrifying our vehicles, our fleet, I think it would be prudent of us to lobby, if that's the right word, our state and federal electeds to pay attention to the electric grid. I can't imagine, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years from now where this really does come to fruition. And most companies, most manufacturers change over to electric vehicles because of consumer demand. We're going to see staggering increases of demand on the grid that is already fragile. And I think the two conversations, the two arguments go hand in hand. And that it would be very prudent of us to begin to lay the groundwork for the argument to our state and federal legislators. That's all I have.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll simply add, I was getting ready to ask our budget director, the question of, as we move to electric vehicles, who's actually investing in that infrastructure? Is it all left on the equipment leasing authority? Or is that actually the city that's going to be investing in that infrastructure? So, that's what I thought. So, currently, it's on the ELA to actually invest in that infrastructure. And even as we look towards this potential budget cycle, the question of, do you invest in our charging stations currently to Brandon's point of getting longer, faster charging stations? All of that is currently on ELA. I would argue it should probably be on the city. But as we have this conversation, that's something for us to consider. So, third round, Council President?
Thank you. I just want to add that, I mean, as we're talking about all these things, some of the things that we are faced with are, I think we need to be better educated on a lot of these things because how these things come to fruition. We talk a lot about solar panels, we talk a lot about the gasoline and all those things. But I think some of those things, the electric vehicles and some of the, you know, the solar panels, things like that, depend on fracking. And some of the things that we're talking about, the reason the gas is going up is because we're not doing some of those things. So, I think it's, it would be good for us to have a conversation and be educated a little bit in this area to make sure we're making right decisions. Because I don't know that we're making all the best decisions. But I think we all want to do what's best for the environment and best for the, to be fiscally responsible for the city of Pittsburgh and for our taxpayers. So, I just think it's better to have like a better conversation. And the conversation, we're more educated in that area. Because I know myself, I get confused when somebody says to me, if you want to do solar panels, you get those things by fracking, you know, that kind of stuff by fracking, or by drilling. So, I think it's just better to understand some of those things. So, maybe we'll do some briefings just to get a better understanding.
Yeah, because that's not my understanding. But I lean towards Councilwoman Strasburg as our sort of resident expert on health.
Environmental, she's amazing.
And I think we'll all work with her to get the, all the appropriate parties around the table.
I think she is amazing. I think it would be great to work with her. And I think Councilwoman Gross also is really good in this area too. I mean, I think everybody wants to be great at it. I think that it's a balance that we have to have. But I think making the right decisions going forward would mean we need to be better educated as a body. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any?
I just wanted to add, and Councilwoman Strasburg, you may be able to answer this. I think the real secret to solar energy is to find a way to store it in batteries, correct? To, for it to be?
Private for?
There are a lot of keys to solar. One is storing it in large batteries. Another is allowing for distributed systems that I think is actually a bipartisan bill in the legislature is allowing this to move forward more than any other renewable energy bills that would allow for people who produce power through own houses to then share it with those who don't have the potential to have solar on their houses, right, and actually feed it back into the system, to have microgrids to allow that to have to be more distributed rather than centralized. A lot of things that can make it easier. And I'll just mention that the price of solar is now, and other types of renewable energy, not all, is reaching the point that it's really competitive with coal. It's becoming much more price competitive with coal. So, the economic arguments for these types of energies versus whether it is powering our vehicles through, you know, electric vehicles, through solar charging stations or other things are much more possible and fiscally responsible for a city to do than they were previously. But I'd love to save this conversation for post-agenda when we have the true experts.
Just curiosity is getting the best of me here.
I'm interested, but the true experts really are those who are working in our sustainability, our Office of Sustainability and Busily, and so I'd really like to hear from them as to, you know, they're on the front lines of this, for sure.
Yeah, we'll wait for, you know, a more broad conversation on it.
Thank you. Any further conversation? If none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation? That takes us to our new papers, under Councilman Calkil.
Thank you.
It's seven thirty-four.
Bill seven thirty-four, resolution approving the recommendation made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Silver Oak Drive in the Banksville neighborhood of Pittsburgh be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section four seventeen oh six of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just briefly, Councilman, didn't you introduce legislation that we didn't have to do this?
I did, and with the contingency of, you know, special permission or if the street or the byway calls for it, that, you know, DOME can make the decision to do it in asphalt. And we had talked about this particular street, I remember, and you were okay with that being asphalted.
Right, well, the residents were okay with it. So, if they're okay with it, I'm going to be okay with it. But I thought you had introduced legislation a while back. So, that we didn't have to do this every time we wanted to take this street.
Four or five years ago, absolutely.
But every time I want to do it, I get asked to do this legislation.
Maybe, I don't know why that is, but I know.
Maybe we'll ask the Law Department to get us some clarity on, in our solicitor, that Councilman Calkil put in legislation so that when we had asphalt streets that we wanted to, or concrete streets, or red brick, or whatever, that if we wanted to have them paved with asphalt, we didn't need to go through this legislation all the time. But yet, every time I want a street changed from concrete to asphalt, I have to go through this process still. I'm asked to go through this process still. So, I just wanted to make clarity, do we need it or not? That's all.
Right, no, that, you're absolutely right. It was, if you have a brick street, a concrete street, you know, Belgium block street, it's to remain that way. Unless there's good reason behind it. And that, therefore, the DOME or whoever's taking on that project is to come to you and say, well, look, this just makes sense. And if it makes sense to you and the neighborhood, most importantly, if they're okay with it, then apparently, you know, you know, we give them permission. They're obviously doing it in asphalt because of, you know, the outrageous prices of concrete and block and, you know, red brick. It's kind of.
I just wanted to make sure, because I don't want to rely on my own memory, because you all know I lost part of my memory in that car accident. So, and I see stuff like that, I'm thinking, was this something or not?
No, no, it absolutely is.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation? So, we'll now go back to our Public Safety Services Committee. We have Bill six twenty-nine open on the table. Councilman Kraus, if you're okay with deferring to Councilman Burgess?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Motion to amend by substitution. Second.
With discussion?
With discussion.
With discussion.
I don't believe that amendment was set out. I don't have it.
All right, I will, I sent that to you early on, like.
Okay, it might have come.
Few weeks ago.
It just came.
Ten forty-five.
No, but I sent it to you a couple of weeks ago, too.
So, he resented, he resented.
I resented, but I sent it to you maybe ten days ago, twelve days ago. But.
Anyway, there is an amendment that just came into our office now.
It's the same, the amendment is the same document. But it's okay, I'm not, but my intention really is to substitute and probably hold. But I wanted to substitute first and talk about how it came to be, and then we can hold or do whatever council wants to do. Make sense?
Sure.
So, I want to thank Jake Pollock and the administration. Jake Pollock and Bobby Wilson and Laura Drogorsky and all the people who helped me rewrite this piece of legislation so they could have widespread buy-in. Basically, what we are doing is we have changed the name and narrowed the focus of the legislation to what it is we are not doing now in the city. And that is, it's called the Pittsburgh Strong Communities. And if I can walk you through, it's really fairly simple. And what it does is it's building and serving strong communities where residents are healthy, safe, and sound. It's a process of engaging citizens and community-based organizations and to help them create processes, patterns, and organizations and activities that support healthy, safe, and sound communities. Basically, it says two things. The activities are really twofold. One is to provide public engagement and an ongoing public engagement process. During, this is during COVID, when we had the recovery funds, one of the things that struck me is we have all these citizen groups that came to us to ask us to do things that we couldn't do, right? There was no vehicle to kind of teach them how to engage us or what was possible to engage, and then to provide capacity building. What we found in maybe, and this is really true, we learned this in the Stop the Violence funding, I'm sure that Bobby also can speak to us. We have all these community-based organizations that need, they're, they need pre-technical assistance. And a lot of people, they want to start their own businesses, that they're really, they need pre-support. And we can give them that support. And finally, this would be staffed by the Public Engagement Office of Council. And then it also allows us to set up an advisory group of each member of council can appoint an expert so that they would have then access to these citywide resources to do the work. So, that they didn't know, they would have these other experts on an ongoing basis to meet with and to help them frame this. So, again, I want to take the administration. We talked at length, and Jake Pollock literally helped write it and amend it. And I really appreciate him taking the time to actually put his hands on it. And so, it is, it is, we think, is something the city is not doing now. It does not interfere at all in what the city is doing, nor does it compete. But what it does is it puts our offices on the ground, providing support to citizens, small businesses, and community-based organizations. And so, that's what the amendment does. And it changes the name, in part because of Mr. Wilson, Pittsburgh Strong Communities Initiative, to make it sure, make it clear that it's primarily a community-based initiative. And I'll start with that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Kraus?
Thank you, Ben. I'm curious, if you'll permit interlocutory for a moment, if there's a funding mechanism that's associated with this at this point in time, or if there will be a request for funding initiatives to be associated with this piece of legislation in the future?
I don't see it as needing funding, but because our office, we already have the staff to implement it. In my mind, and they already have a budget. So, I think that the Public Engagement, the Public Engagement Office has both the staff and sufficient budget, at least now, to do the work. And I think that there will be funding, but not from us, but from the, in part, there will be some funding from the Stop the Violence Fund to community-based organizations that will help them base. And what this would do is help them build the capacity to utilize those funds and to match those funds with other funding. So, I do not think that this will need additional funding.
So, if we have already charged organizations with application for access to Stop the Violence funds?
Yes.
And when this is adopted, then this will go back out? If you will permit forbid?
And when this is adopted, then this will go back out. If you will permit for bid, for, I don't know a better way to say it, for a sort of a rethinking of who might want to make application or apply for those funds?
The way that the fund is situated, at least initially, is that it will give out funding every six months. So there is a group that, of recipients that will go out shortly for intervention services. In six months, there will be another group of proposals for those who are doing prevention work. So the goal is really every six months to give out some money so that, and in the interim, those who were not selected would be able to be provided with technical assistance to help them so they would be better able to submit in the future. So Stop the Violence Fund is going to give out, basically, at least the agreement so far over the next few years, is to give out two rounds of mini-grants, one in the fall and one in the spring.
I would support amending and holding for further discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. On the bill as amended, Councilman Clarkhill?
Okay.
Well, we haven't amended it yet, actually.
Yeah, first, I want to.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'm sorry, let the man speak. It's important.
Now, I want to compliment you on trying to define our new hires as to what we look for them to do. They're all incredibly talented, all incredibly nice people. And I really just wanted to point out with Ricky Moody yesterday, you know, once in a while, we get people come in here with serious problems, you know, whether it's abuse, or, you know, mental illness. We never, I'm certainly not going to go take that person in the hallway and pretend like I'm going to figure their problems out for them. I had a really good conversation with Ricky yesterday. We talked for about an hour and a half. And the young woman who spoke at this podium, who had abuse issues, you know, he immediately engaged, at your direction, thank you, he immediately went and engaged with her. I left about an hour and a half later, and he was still talking to her out on that bench. So that's something we didn't have in these chambers before. It's something I welcome, and it was nice just to see it being effective in person. So I look forward to, you know, how we're going to define each and every rule. I know, you know, I have a great deal of confidence in all of them, and I'm still trying to figure out exactly how to incorporate them in what I do as well. So thank you for your work in that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to point out first, Ricky's not part of the Community Engagement Office. He is separate, and I think that he could actually use some help over here, because that was not what he was hired to do. He was not hired to intervene and do those things. That was actually a function the administration had previously. But I will say, over the last two weeks, we've had two different incidents where Ricky came out and intervened and helped stop somebody from coming in here. And I want to say, he also helped write part of this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, I think he was the initial person working on this with Reverend. And so I want to give him credit for his work on this as well. But I do want to say, going forward, I think part of it is, is you see, so there are so many nonprofits in the city of Pittsburgh, and we keep saying how we want to reduce nonprofit space and do those kinds of things so that we have more on the tax rules. But some of these people are working out of their own homes and not having any space at all to work. And it would be great to see some of these, the buildings that we have, that are just sitting there vacant, used in some better ways, like the Park Building in Sheridan Park that just sits there, and it could be used for programming, you know. But we've always been hesitant to use those buildings, but they're just sitting there. So I think we should be doing something better. So I think that's a part of this conversation. But I think, I also think we need to talk about, when you're talking about employment and helping people with, you know, their own businesses, I think we need to talk about employment within the city of Pittsburgh, because a lot of times, we just skip over, some of these people start their nonprofits because they've been skipped over, or because they cannot get a job here in the city of Pittsburgh, and because we're not giving people a chance. We talk a good game about making sure everybody else is paying people well and giving people, you know, great opportunities, but when it comes down to it, we don't always do it ourselves. So I hope that that's part of this conversation going forward, that we're part of the equation here, not just pushing it off to everybody else to do what we think should be done. But I also am going to say again, the only thing I will ever vote for in terms of nonprofits is if they are registered 501(c)(3) theirselves, if they're in good standing with the state, if they filed federal 990s. If they've not, if they've been in existence for more than two or three years, they should be at least in that process somewhere. And if they've been around for two or three years and haven't done that, I don't care what conduit they use, I'm not going to vote for that. So I just want to be very clear about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Councilman, what is your pleasure?
Well, we have to approve the amendment first, and then I'll make a motion to, how long, Mr. Cross? One week? Is that long enough? Or how long do you want me hold? Two weeks, one week?
Two, two. Let's do two to be safe.
Okay.
So all those in favor of the amendment say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any further discussion on the bill as amended?
Motion to hold for two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held two weeks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cross.
Thank you.
That takes us to Innovation and Performance Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strausberger. We have one supplemental paper, Bill 752.
Bill 752, excuse me, Resolution Amending Resolution 280 of 2020, authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or adoption of existing government contracts with E+ Technology, Inc., for commodities and professional services for system critical adjustments, improvements, and upgrades to maintain the city of Pittsburgh's network functionality by increasing the funding.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our last committee of the day, Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. We have one deferred paper, Bill 641.
Bill 641, Resolution of the City of Pittsburgh, adopting an amendment to the Still Valley Authority's Articles of incorporation to decrease the number of members of the Board of Directors of the Authority.
Motion to approve this pre-discussion?
Second.
Second.
I just pulled my audio to some grades, I'm going to speak a little bit. I just want to thank members of the Still Valley Authority, and also President Smith, who did some research into this. I believe that she is more comfortable with council moving this forward.
No, Councilwoman.
Information. This is passed by multiple municipalities at the same time, basically, and the other municipalities have already given their approval to the resolution, and so I returned to do that. So I just wanted to give everybody an update.
Council.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council President?
Councilwoman, I apologize. The administration, when I talked to Zeke, asked for a two-week hold, because he's away this week.
Okay, I just understood our communication then. I appreciate that. We did get some of the email updates, but I'm happy to motion a hold for two weeks so we can get his response as well.
Yeah, I believe our solicitor and Zeke are working together.
Okay, thank you.
So they need to keep you in.
I'll just motion a hold for two weeks then.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of a two-week hold say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held two weeks. That takes us to our last bill, Bill 691.
Bill 691, Resolution Authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in into the following publicly owned properties in the 15th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 56K, Lot 65A, and 67, 35, and 39 West Elizabeth Street, Council District 5.
Motion to approve this pre-discussion?
Second.
Thank you. Just a reminder to members, this is the bill that moved, there was three bills moving usable properties on our agenda several weeks ago. Two of them moved forward. I motioned to recommit this one to the last standing committee, and we held a long wait. And that allowed us to, once again, have circle wagons, talk again to the RA, get some more of the background information, help President Smith and I did a phone call. And in the future, they're going to be making sure that they move in President Smith on other District 5 properties. As a reminder, this is into District 5, which does not have representation on council right now, but it's, we're comfortable in moving this one forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda. We do have a few meeting announcements. Next Tuesday, September 27th, with sessions at 1:00 and 2:00 p.m., council will hold briefings on unhoused populations in the city of Pittsburgh. Also next week, due to Rosh Hashanah holiday, council will hold both our regular and standing committee meetings on Wednesday, September 28th at 10:00 a.m. and 1:30 p.m., respectively. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. September 28th for the regular meeting, and at 12:30 p.m. September 28th for the standing committees' meeting. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there anything from members? Councilman Burgess?
Mr. Cross, I have to apologize. I realize I'm going through my email, and I realize that I wrote an email, you can't hear me. Mr. Cross, I want to apologize to you. I realize that going through my phone, which is a mistake of doing email on my phone, I wrote an email on September 9th, added the attachments, and never pressed send. So you were right, you didn't get the attachment. I didn't press send on September 9th, and so that's my fault. And so I'm making a lot of mistakes today. So excuse me for the oversight. I probably should not send email via phone in the future.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Councilman.
Thank you. Madam President?
Does anybody else have anything? Okay, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought it's alone. I just want to call for a post-agenda. I'm waiting for Ricky Moody actually to send me, I just sent him a text about the foster, about, it's, there's so many kids in foster care in the city of Pittsburgh, and I talk about it often, how one of my neighborhoods is 50% transient, and the school is always struggling, and it's 50% transient. And as we started drilling down in some numbers, we noticed that that area had the high, one of the highest rates in Allegheny County for open CYF cases. And I think across the city of Pittsburgh and across Allegheny County, it's an issue. And I know that we are going to work together on some of these things with the county and with others. But I really want to start with a post-agenda of some experts on what we can do as a council. And one of the things we're doing with our magistrate in our area and with Ricky Moody is we're going to have the magistrate working with Diane and Ricky, and instead of, when kids get sent to the magistrate's office for being truant or whatever, he's going to put a program in place, they're going to put a program in place that they're going to, the magistrate will now send people to, to this program, the parents to this program, instead of finding the parents, a way to help the families stay together and to do better. But also, this is an issue across Allegheny County, so there were several judges that work in family court that asked if they could be a part of it. So we're going to bring everyone to the table to try to come up with a better solution for our families. It's so limited what we can do as a council, but if we can put programming in place that helps families do better, then that's what we want to do. But I would think it's going to begin with a post-agenda so that we do understand a little bit better what it is we can and can't do, and how we can help. So I'm going to call for a post-agenda on reunification and unification in the city of Pittsburgh.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close. Madam President will work with Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
That's scheduled.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, motion to approve the minutes adjourned meeting.
Somebody.
Second.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.